Thank you, Dr. Cobbler. I'll call the 3:00 PM session of the February 27th, 2024 meeting of the Henry County Board of Supervisors to order. I'd like to welcome all of our visitors. Remind you, if you want to address the board, you must sign up seven days in advance at any of our regular meetings to be put on the agenda. The county administrator is the contact person for the board. However, the public may address the board under the Agenda item, matters presented by the public that we will take up later in this evening's meeting. Again, welcome, everyone. Thank you for coming out and participating in your county government. Our first business item of consideration today is the Agenda item number five. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the items of consent.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero. Jennifer, Agenda item number six, monthly report on delinquent tax collection efforts. We have with us County Treasurer Scott Grandstaff. Scott, welcome.
This is our report as of January 31st. Per personal property collection, we have collected 92.89% of the 22 personal property taxes. We collected 88,225 for the month. Just remember, this is the '22 tax because February 5th was the due date for '23 personal property tax. Real estate collection as of January 31st, we have collected 83% of the 23 real estate taxes. Since January of this year, TACS has collected $78,964. And so far, until February, we've had 13 DMV stops.
All right. Does anyone have any questions with Mr. Grandstaff at this time? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
That takes us to Agenda item number seven, an update from Martinsville Henry County Economic Development Corporation. We have with us Mark Heath. Mark, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And the board, updates for February 24th in our Small Business Division. Valerie Harwood will be conducting a small business financing workshop on March 27th with Karen White from Virginia Small Business Financing Authority that will come and speak about financing programs through the Commonwealth. That'll be a probably well-attended program. Valerie's also launched a briefcase program, it's a local edition of our larger regional program. It's kind of a fast-hitting program. You can read the criteria. But in this round, between now and June 30th, $15,000 is available. It could go to 15 companies, it could go to one company. And you can see that the items that we're really focused on, these are for companies from four to 30 employees. You have to have a physical location in Martinsville Henry County, and the money has to be spent on tax related, so we'll verify that with Commissioner of Revenue. March 31st is the deadline, so again, it'll be $15,000 in this budget. Starting July, there'll be another round, and hopefully we'll adjust based on how successful this is, how well, I guess, we see. You can see the three site visits that Valerie made, and also the inquiries. A lot of folks continue to come for support with SLAM certifications and other Virginia certifications to do business. We attended, Valerie attended, JR was there too, in the last week, a meeting with Teal Jones and the community around them, and it went very well. I think you may have been there, too. We're really pleased with the communication going on between Teal Jones and the community, and I think things are improving there. Valerie's going to be helping for us in Chatsworth, the visiting area, so that's good, too. And from the marketing division, we've done a whole report to attach as much as we can. We've also launched new updates on both our websites. Visit Martinsville will be done between now and this fiscal year, and the guest market will start in July. Of significant notice, we did, Spencer and I did a Zoom, but we were asked to participate in a site readiness program that's done by the Site Selector Guild, which is the foremost international site selectors group that we work through. There were 15 communities selected as pilot prizes. We submitted Common Crossin Lot Two, and out of 15 submitted, our ranking was the highest of all the sites throughout the nation. So we think this is going to be a big help to us. It'll be launched at the Guild's meeting, the first week in April, their annual meeting, and we think this will be a big plus for us. We're excited to be asked to participate, and also obviously thrilled with the rating that we got. You have attached the weekly average waste chart, and I would, you've seen this before, I think it was even used at your plan of tree, but it's really good information, particularly the last five or six years. And again, I would stress, this is for the manufacturing sector, not all jobs, the ones that we're most focused on. And we updated, Spencer updated commuting patterns. It's changed a little bit. These lagged a couple of years, but it's closer to 50/50 now than it's ever been, and it's interesting that we have more people coming from Danville to work here than go to Danville to work, which surprises a lot of folks, but it's the way that has been going for a number of years, and almost 10-plus thousand that leave every day is our number-one labor tool for new companies, and we market that quite a bit. Tourism had 15 or other site visits. You can see the phone calls and requests for information of where they came from. We've had bulk distribution to local and state, or rather, regional sites, and we're constantly sending out information. Dick and Willie continues to be a big hit locally and folks from out of town. There was a special giveaway, Valentine social media giveaway, that the winner received tickets to the Reeve Road show, chocolates from Caco Trails, rather, which is a great favorite, and a gift card from the ground floor. So it was a pretty nice package. We also had two events around Black History Month. We consisted of blogs and social media posts to celebrate Black History in Martinsville Henry County, and did a video interview with the new FADI director, so it was a good opportunity there for us. In our workforce development, again, Sarah's been working, Sarah Hydes with the website designs, and we're also featuring, in the Site Selector Guild material will feature the Technic Center shell and the new Marlboro shell. So we now have two shells to be marketed, and both are generating interest. So it's good to add that back in that market. From a talent standpoint, Shirley Dyson with BDP has been in town working with Valerie, specifically with Blue Ridge Apple Culture, and she will be with a group that's coming back, a group from BDP, on Thursday, Friday, that most of those folks, the new marketing managers, have not been here, so it'll be an opportunity for us to show them the community and see what it all about Thursday afternoon and Friday. So we're waiting for that. Also, we had our group, Sarah's leading group, working to try to get a new hotel in Martinsville Henry County. We've met with artists, foundations, and developers, and continue to push that. More difficult than we thought, but at the end of the day, I'm sure we'll give you the hotel at some point, because the market definitely shows a need for it. I'll be happy to answer any of the questions.
Does anyone have any questions with Mark at this time? Thank you, Mark. Agenda item number eight, we'll have an update on the deployment of broadband services. Mr. Wagner.
As you're well aware, we are undergoing major broadband project in Henry County, and we have contracted with River Street Networks to serve as the permanent provider for our community with that project. And we have with us today Robert Taylor from River Street to provide an update on the project.
Good afternoon. I'm Robert Taylor with River Street Networks. I'm out of Danville. I'd like to give you guys an update on the progress of the broadband expansion that we're undertaking here in the county. Hopefully, this will be the first meeting. I'd like to be able to come out on a quarterly basis and give you updates once construction starts, and at that time, be able to give you an idea of how many miles of fiber has been built, how many locations have been passed, and how many locations have been hooked up. So right now, the Henry County is part of a, what we call the West Pymott PDC West Project. There were two projects that the West Pymott PDC partners with, River Street Networks. One was on the west, one was on the east. The West Project takes the counties of Henry, Patrick, and Franklin, and puts them together under an AEP Utility Leverage Program, which allows us to leverage the utility lines that AEP has to hopefully expedite the build once the project gets started. And it has started, but it started in Franklin County. Go into more details on that here in a little bit. So with the funding mechanisms that we went after, that was called the VADI, the Virginia Telecommunication Initiative, we were able to get funding in both 2022 and 2023, as well as get funding in the Rural Digital Opportunity Fund. For us, there were no funding options in Henry County for the Rural Digital Opportunity Fund. Most of your blocks, matter of fact, all your blocks, went to SpaceX. But VADI didn't recognize SpaceX or the Starlink as a viable option, so, and later on, the SEC also withdrew that funding as well. So VADI allowed any SpaceX locations to go into a VADI project, and that's what we did, is we picked up all the SpaceX locations, as well as some others that were identified by our engineers and by the county, and put them into the VADI 2022 project. And then we turned and built onto that project by adding additional locations in 2023, when the definition of broadband was changed, as well as when the mapping was improved at the state level. So what I want to do is give you an overview of what the project looks like. Unfortunately, okay, good, they can see it up there. So if you look, and let me take you through, the red lines, that's the '22 fiber. The white lines are going to be the 2023 add-on fibers. And then, when you have the locations, the yellow holes, those are the locations that were identified in the VADI 2022 application, and the red squares, I feel like lucky terms here, the red squares, the white circles, and the blue balloons are all in 2023. The difference in each of those is that if it's a red square, it was along an existing route where we're already building fiber, but it wasn't fundable before because it had been chosen or shown as being served because the definition of internet was different, right? The definition of internet over this time went from 25 meggs down to 100 meggs down. The difference in that is, if you're doing a standard definition video stream, that takes about four megs, high definition takes about 10 megs, and if you're doing 4K, it takes 25 megs. So after the pandemic, the need for internet changed from an entertainment menu to a necessity, basically. And at that time, the need for additional bandwidth increased drastically, right? Because not only were people doing streaming, but you needed to be able to do remote telework and remote telehealth, as well as remote learning. So the definition of broadband got changed at the federal level, as well as the state, and so all those locations that were previously seen as served were now decided to be unserved, or defined as unserved. So the red squares are locations that were along the existing route. The white circles were locations that were pretty close, but we had to extend fiber to it to some degree. And then the blue balloons were locations that, which we saw as meeting the service requirements, but the county was able to identify labor as not being served, and so we were able to add those to application as well. So in total, what we're looking at across the two projects, we're looking at passing over 3,461 locations with fiber. We're looking at a total project cost of over $34 million. River Street's bringing in 4.4 million. AEP is putting in 12.7 million in infrastructure upgrades and improvements. The county has brought in 4.04 million in matching funds. Most of that is ARPA. I know that some of the funds are not, and those have to be spent by 2025, so we need to make sure that those are the first ones spent. And in VADI, we were able to secure, with your matching funds and our matching funds, we were able to secure over $13 million in VADI funds. Now, I can tell you, that cost of press locations here in Henry County is one of the highest, at almost $9,000, almost $9,900. Most of the time, we see the cost of paths around $6,500. But a lot of that's due to the terrain, as well as the, you know, number of houses per mile. So if you have any questions on project overview, just let me know. So the next slide I have here is what's going on with the project. So AEP just started earlier this week, building out Franklin County. Our understanding is that once they started Franklin, within 30 days, they would start building in Henry County, as well as in Patrick County. Currently, we're finalizing the contract negotiation records for the 2023. So when 2023 was awarded, we didn't get an award, we got a letter of intent to fund from the state. And the reason why is because our project hadn't started construction yet, and it hadn't started construction because the Virginia State Corporation Commission, who only had one sitting judge at the time, had to wait till they had two judges to hear the request from AEP to participate in Utility Leverage Program. So that caused at least over six months of delay before we could get started. Once that got approved, AEP's engineers, as well as ours' engineers, started working on finalizing the design, and we were able to get the construction, or the CNR documents started up by the state, so that we can get this under contract, the VADI 2023 under contract. Between the two projects, if you were to ask, about $30 million is the 2022 project, and about $3.6 million is the 2023 project, and that's an additional $1.2 million or so of state funding. So it's very important, as you could see from the map earlier, that we get that under contract, because as we're building down the road, we could be building past a 2022 location, as well as a 2023 location along the same power line. In the future, one of the things we'd like to do is the next funding mechanism, there's going to still be probably additional VADI rounds, but based off of what we're seeing is, instead of it being a availability of about $50 million, it looks like that's going to get cut in half in the next two funding years for VADI. The big opportunity is BEED. That's a federal fund being brought down from the NTIA to the state, where the state's going to administer it, just like they do VADI. The state of Virginia is getting $1.48 billion. And they know that of that $1.48 billion, approximately $900 million of that's going to go to infrastructure bill out. What's happening right now is the state has been working with ISPs as well as counties and cities to identify locations that currently do not have service at least 100 megs down and 20 megs up, that can be classified as be fundable. So there's a map out there, and the mapping has gone out from where it used to be a census block, which if this whole ring was a census block, and the person standing at the back door was the last home on the cable route, and they were able to get service, but none of us could get service, the federal government would have seen this all being served, because one person could. They changed those rules, and they went to what they call rooftop ad dressing. So now with the new maps, they've got all these rooftop addresses that they had to go through and get a clean slate and identify which ones actually had service and didn't have service. The state hasn't finished that map up. It should be finalized soon. Once that happens, and the state gets their approval on their volume two submission to the NTIA, then they'll open up the application process. Once they open up the application process, our plan is to come back here with you all and take a look at the locations that were missed in VADI 2022 and/or 2023, to see what ones make sense for us to add to an application for us to go after. Now, it might be other ISPs are in the areas that says, hey, we would rather these ISPs go after these because they have, you know, locations already there, but in areas where you guys are building, we think it makes more sense for you to build over here because it's going to be a quicker deployment. So that's what we're looking at next. Any questions?
Can you translate that for all of us? In simple terms, what is it that you're saying about this particular project?
About the BEED project?
Yes, sir.
So BEED is a massive amount of funding. It's $1.4 billion that the state's going to have to build out, if I can, how can I go back?
Yes, please.
All right. So if you look at that, we have Swiss cheese, right? We have these holes in there. So in those holes, you can't tell me there's no houses. There's going to be some houses in there. And it would be a shock to me that if you have a house between 220 and, I guess it's 87, that how do you have houses in that area that are probably served? They're not, but they weren't identified. And they weren't identified because they weren't on the map. And they weren't on the map because maybe their 911 address didn't show up, or because the maps just didn't pick them up. So now they're out there trying to identify all these locations. So there's going to be some locations between 220 and 87 that get identified that are going to need to get service, and the BEED allocation is the time to get that funding. This is where the federal government said, we have $45 billion to fix broadband in this country, and 1.48 of that is going to Virginia, and Virginia's got to figure out how to get those locations connected. So what I'm saying is, if you look at our map, we're pretty well all over the county, but there might be pockets out there where you might have Cox, or Zito, or somebody else that says, hey, we have this community, we can extend our network quicker than River Street can build to it. So what we want to do is take a holistic look at this, and say, all right, in this county, and I want to say, when I saw pre-map challenge process for Henry County, I want to say, they identified approximately 400 locations that should be in the county that are be fundable. Once the challenge and everything comes down, there's a number of locations could go up where they could go down, but it's up to us to identify those and find a way to get service to them. Because if you were to ask me, when's the next time we're going to get $1.4 billion to build out broadband in the state? It's going to be not my last time.
So how is this going to improve access to the most remote areas in the county?
According to the BEED process, if I can't get fiber to them, then I have to come up with, or somebody has to come up with a plan to try to get them some sort of access. Next is terrestrial wireless, and then the last option's going to be low over the satellite. The deal is, is that all the locations that are being identified in the United States, in the state of Virginia, and in Halifax County, or in Henry County, excuse me, have to have some sort of broadband access that's 100 megs down and 20 megs up. And so it's up to us to figure out, how can we get them served with the funding that's out there?
Let me add this piece here. I think I described it this way early on in the process. Our VADI 2022 and 2023 grants will pretty much extend service to anyone who does not have access to any broadband now. So if they have Xfinity, they would not likely be offered broadband through River Street Networks. I said likely because they could buy their house to get to another area, they may be offered it. And then 2023 included those areas that may be served in our community, but Bright Speed but did not meet the 25 megabytes threshold, and so they were vetting 2023. When he talks about this BEED, that would expand that to even more customers who may have internet now, may have broadband, it's just not meeting the 100 megabits per second threshold.
Or they mean that their address might mean that they've been identified previously because they were left out on some mapping system.
And I think I read somewhere early where it's, folk who had the better internet were going to get, I guess, the broadband implemented first.
It's the other way around.
It's the other way around.
No internet will have the best internet in Henry County.
And they're going to get it first, and then it's going to work its way. Okay.
Anyway, that's all I have for you. If there's any other questions, let me know. Any follow-ups? Again, like I said, as soon as construction starts, I'd like to be able to come back on a quarterly basis and give you an update, how many miles have been installed, how many locations have been passed, how many connected customers. The other thing we also would like to do is see about setting up a groundbreaking or some sort of precedent, and I'll work with the staff on getting that together here in the near future as well.
Would you want to take two minutes to just talk about marketing efforts that you'll do once it's ready to be marketed?
So unfortunately, I don't have it on here, but one of the things that we do is, if you can see that map, we're going to take that map, and it will show dots on a public-facing map that's on our webpage, that people could go down, put in their address, find their dot, and let us know they're interested. That's one way to do it. The other way is they can pick up the phone and call us, and there's an 844 number, they can call us and say, look, I don't have internet, but I'm interested in getting it. Can you see if I have availability to your service when it's built? And we can do the same process, and we'll register it. So we'll do billboards, we'll do radio ads, we'll do local paper listings, as well as direct mailings. But what we try to do is get people to go to that website and put their information in. We also want them to let us know is, hey, I'm not on here, but my neighbor is, so that we can make sure that their address is there, right? Now, it might be, well, we don't have you down because maybe you're already being served because you're the last house on the road, and you've already got cable, but we're going to pass by you, and when that happens, we'll still be able to sign you up for service. So part of the marketing is going to be to drive people to that location, because if they put their information that they're interested, once the construction is done and the service is ready, then we reach back out to them and say, service is now available, would you like to sign up? And then they're offered whatever the options are at that time, whatever the discounts might be at that time to go on and sign up for service, so that we can get them installed. So it's not something where they have to keep coming back and checking, and checking, checking. If we can get them to go to the website, put down that they're interested in the service, then we'll check back in with them when the service is ready for them to have.
Thank you, Rob.
I'd just like to say to Mr. Wagner and Mr. Taylor, thank you for the presentation today and coming in. During my campaign, I heard a lot about this, and we made a promise that this would happen, so thank you for following up with that, and we look forward to continued progress with this.
Appreciate it. Again, any other follow-up questions, please, just send it to Mr. Wagner, and he knows exactly how to get ahold of you.
All right. Thank you. Agenda item number nine, a consideration of a resolution accepting a conditional grant to fund an outdoor fitness court and community wellness initiative. Mr. Wagner.
So Brandon Martin is taking the lead on this project. If it's okay with the board, I'll ask him to come to the podium to provide more information about this exciting and healthy initiative.
Good afternoon, members of the board. This topic is going to be particularly near and dear to Supervisor Diller as part of his Health and Living Coalition, so beginning, I guess, earlier this year, maybe, we'll go back in December, Parks and Recreation Director, Park and Recreation Director Roger Adams and myself began consulting with the National Fitness Campaign on the possibility of having an outdoor fitness court brought to Henry County. Through that process, we were awarded a $50,000 conditional grant from the campaign, and before I ask you to pass the resolution to accept this conditional grant, I'll give you a little bit of background of why we believe this was necessary to begin with. Just to look at this chart, it has some health data with the county compared to the rest of the state. As you can see, our life expectancy is lower than the state, our obesity rate is higher, physical activity is higher, and then access to exercise opportunities is rated as lower for most residents. The site that we qualified through the National Fitness Campaign is where the Smithfield Sports Complex. There's a snapshot on the left side of the screen of where we're looking to place the court. In one, there's where the slot used to be, it's over there at the top end of the complex, right by the bypass. Over on the right side, you can kind of see like an overlay of what the court looks like. They base their entire premise off of, you can be physically fit based off of seven separate movements, and then there's different workouts you can do using the machines that are there. We believe this addresses the three main barriers to physical fitness in our community, one being equipment, two being cost because of your free accounting, and the third is knowledge. Most people don't really know what exercises to do and how to be physically fit. So this court comes with a free app that people can simply go up to the wall and scan the QR code, create an account, and then it gives them access to a number of different exercises and different routines that they can follow. I believe that showing is better than telling, so a quick video from the campaign to give you a better overview of what to expect.
We're changing the way that I think about fitness. With 200 fitness courts open, our campaign is growing. From college campuses to city parks and trails, we're bringing free fitness everywhere, and we're just getting started. Hi, I'm Mitch Managian, founder of the National Fitness Campaign. The National Fitness Campaign was founded in 1979 when we opened the first fitness court. Redesigned for the 21st century, the fitness court is the world's best outdoor gym. Our seven movement, seven-minute system allows you to use your own body weight to get the perfect workout. Easy or hard, it will work for you. Our goal is to build healthy communities by making outdoor fitness an essential part of people's lives, so that each day is better than the last. Now more than ever before, it is vital that we move fitness outdoors to remain safe, healthy, and strong.
Michiganers, as soon as we can, we go outside, which is one of the reasons
Michiganers, as soon as we can, we go outside, which is one of the reasons why the fitness court was such an attraction to us. What impressed us most was their basic philosophy, that they want to provide world-class fitness for free. Truly, anyone can use it, no matter what your age is, no matter what your physical fitness level is, no matter what your skills are, it is very adaptable.
Thousands of certified ambassadors will be trained to deliver classes, challenges, and clinics as part of our National Fitness Campaign. New programs are bringing students outdoors across America. The Fitness Court mobile app is your gateway to enroll in these programs. Simply scan the new digital wall with your phone to access a library of free workouts designed to optimize your experience on the fitness court. Learn the moves and take challenges as we dig deep to create impact for our partners across America. This year, we are thrilled to introduce Fitness Court Public Art. Cities have the opportunity to select a local artist to design their fitness court, using the power of the arts and fitness outdoors in iconic public spaces. We're proud to have helped cities of all sizes raise millions of dollars from respected sponsors to support free fitness. Wherever fitness is a priority, you can find a fitness court. Building beyond two hundred cities and colleges, we're partnering with large cities using urban movement data to map the best locations for healthy infrastructure. We're bringing fitness courts to within ten minutes of population centers everywhere.
They provide these wraparound services that, from a city's perspective, that's what you want in a partner like this. You want it to come, present it to you on a silver platter with a bow tied around it. They're one of the best partners, I think, that I personally have ever worked with.
We serve almost one point two million members across Michigan, and this partnership really is an opportunity for us to bring scalable, free health and wellness opportunities to our community. So I would actually invite cities and organizations, big and small, to explore the opportunity to invest in fitness courts. To be very honest with you, the feedback from different municipalities and different communities has been very positive.
We're committed to raise a hundred and fifty million dollars to bring the campaign to one thousand cities and schools building the largest fitness movement in the world. Join us. Let's make world-class fitness free. A is grow. From college camp.
So in addition to the fifty thousand dollars that I mentioned that we got from the National Fitness Campaign, we've also been in discussions with other outside sources. We've gotten at least a verbal commitment from one source of seventy-five thousand dollars to help support this, so we're really trying to minimize the amount of county money that's put into this project. Next steps, we're going to have to solidify these commitments on those additional funds, obviously, but we want to help build the structure and then train mobile ambassadors of fitness to kind of get the community going, thinking maybe some high school athletes, hopefully, share songs, maybe they want to step in and do it as well. Just advocates for physical fitness in our community. Then we kind of want to use this as a launch point for a broader Healthy Living Campaign strategy, and I have a few other ideas that I have coming down the pipeline for that. In the future, we could also have a link coming in with some pretty good press availability for it, and then we officially launch the campaign. That's all that we have for the presentation piece. We do have a resolution for your consideration in front of you, and then if you have any questions, just.
All right. Thank you, Brandon.
Thank you, Brandon.
With the background material that the board's had time to consider along with this presentation, what is the pleasure of the board in regard to accepting a resolution for a conditional grant fund?
I make a motion to approve the resolution as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero, Jennifer. Agenda item number ten will take up financial matters, beginning with ten A, an additional appropriation and award of contract referencing asset forfeiture funds for the sheriff's office. Mr. Wagner.
Sheriff Wayne Davis is asking the board to approve an additional appropriation of forty-one thousand thirty-three dollars from federal asset forfeiture funds to purchase a Truenarc solution kit. The Truenarc technology can identify suspected narcotics without a deputy having it to physically handle the substance, greatly reducing the potential for deadly exposure. In addition, Sheriff Davis is asking the board to award a contract to Thermo Fisher Scientific in the same amount to purchase the Truenarc solution kit. And the sheriff is here, should you have questions?
What action does the board desire to take in regard to this additional appropriation and award of contract?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the additional appropriation of forty-one thousand thirty-three dollars from the federal asset forfeiture funds and award a contract in the same amount to Thermo Fisher Scientific for the purchase of the Truenarc solution kit.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero, Jennifer. Ten B, an award of contract referencing engineering services for Commonwealth Crossing Business Center. Mr. Wagner.
Staff is asking the board to approve a contract of two hundred twenty-four thousand eight hundred and ten dollars to Timmons Group for engineering services related to the development of lot two at Commonwealth Crossing Business Center. This contract will cover the engineering services from bidding through construction administration and project closeout. Timmons Group was selected following a request proposal process, and funding for this portion of the project is provided through other grant funds that's already been appropriated.
In regard to awarding of this contract, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to award a contract for two hundred twenty-four thousand eight hundred and ten dollars to Timmons Group in Richmond, Virginia, for engineering services related to the development of lot number two at the Commonwealth Crossing Business Center.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero, Jennifer. Ten C, award of contract referencing elevator, electrical, and mechanical updates for the maintenance department. Mr. Wagner.
Staff is asking the board to approve a contract of two hundred thirteen thousand six hundred and sixty-two dollars to TK Elevator for electrical and mechanical updates to the elevators in the administration building. The existing elevators are the original to the building and experiencing repeated mechanical and electrical failures, and funds for this update are included in the fiscal year twenty-four capital improvements question.
Okay, referencing awarding of contract for elevator, electrical, and mechanical updates, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to award a contract of two hundred and thirteen thousand six hundred and sixty-two dollars to TK Elevator in Roanoke, Virginia, for electrical and mechanical updates to the elevators in the administration building.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero, Jennifer. Ten D, award of contract referencing inspection and materials testing for the Dick and Willie Passage Trail Phase Six-A Two for the Engineering and Mapping Department. Mr. Wagner.
Staff is asking the board to approve a contract in the amount of one hundred twenty-five thousand dollars to Hurt and Profit Incorporated for inspection service and material testing related to Phase Six-A Two of the Dick and Willie Passage Trail. And funding for this project is provided through several grants, which has also already been appropriated.
What action would the board desire to take in regard to awarding of this contract?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to award a contract for one hundred and twenty-five thousand to Hurt and Profit Incorporated in Blacksburg, Virginia, for inspection services and materials testing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero, Jennifer. Ten E, an additional appropriation referencing gap financing grant for the John Red Smith Apartments Project. Mr. Wagner.
As part of the redevelopment of the John Red Smith Elementary School to Apartments, the Harvest Foundation provided incentive funds to assist the developer in providing this. The developer has met all of the milestones and benchmarks to be eligible for these grant awards, since staff is asking the board to appropriate one hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars received from the Harvest Foundation to assist with the gap financing provided for John Red Smith Apartments, and award those funds to JRS Realty in accordance with the performance agreement with them. Essentially, this is path-through funds from the Harvest Foundation, it doesn't require any local funds at all.
Okay, Mr. Bryant, this project in York District.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I'm making a motion to approve the additional appropriations of one hundred and thirty-two thousand received from the Harvest Foundation for the gap finance grant related to the John Red Smith Apartment Project.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero, Jennifer. Ten F, an additional appropriation referencing hazard mitigation grant. Mr. Wagner.
Staff is asking the board to approve an additional appropriation of one hundred twenty-one thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars in grant funds received from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management through their Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. The grant will provide the funding needed for the public service authority to upgrade the generator located at the Range Lease at Riverhead Station, and there's no local cost for this one.
Okay. In regards to this additional appropriation, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the board approve the additional appropriation of one hundred and twenty-one thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars from the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero, Jennifer. That takes us to agenda item number eleven, a request for a full-time position, the general registrar's office. Mr. Wagner.
Registrar Dawn Stoltz Vaughn is asking the board to approve the addition of a new full-time position in her office. Should the board wish to approve this request, it will need to appropriate fifteen thousand dollars from its contingency fund to cover the cost of the position from March first to June thirty. And in your packet, and I think most of you all may have also received a letter from Ms. Stoltz Vaughn, you have a letter talking about her need and some background information about it, and then she is here along with members of the electoral board, if you have questions.
Okay. Welcome.
Thank you, sir. I don't know how much information you'd like from me, I would like to explain to you why I am requesting this at this point, if that would be okay, which is if you may. I'm not requesting a new position, I'm actually requesting that a part-time position be moved to a full-time position within my office. And this request is based upon the number of hours that since 2020, election world has changed dramatically, with all of the requirements, the mandates that we're required to meet. We just do not have enough staffing hours that are currently budgeted for in order for us to meet those mandates. And I personally take my job very personal, and I want Henry County to shine in elections and everywhere else, but most especially in elections, since I'm involved in that. With the changes for 2020, they were mostly focused on absentee voting, as Mr. Taylor had talked about, the need for people being remote and not being in crowds and that type of thing. Absentee voting has been the big push, whether we're doing absentee mail ballots, which we are required to send out forty-five days before every election, has increased since 2018. There were four permanent absentee mail ballots that were mailed out. In 2023, there were a thousand ninety-two, and that was the June primary. That was a twenty-seven thousand percent increase. Okay, that's man hours, putting both packets together, mailing out ballots. Once those ballots are returned to us, there's an envelope inside of an hour envelope that has to be physically inspected. Each and every ballot must be inspected to make sure that it is ready to be processed or that it has, I guess, met all of the requirements by state law to, in order for us to count that ballot. That is a lot of man hours, as well as curing, which is the process that if someone has made a mistake or has not filled out that envelope, that is processed where we have to call, try to reach out and call that voter if we have their phone number, or we're also required to mail letters to each one, stating the problems and giving them, I guess, avenues to make those corrections, so that we're able to count every single vote in Henry County. We've incurred same-day registration, along with the forty-five days of early voting. The forty-five days added one thousand four hundred and seventy-two manpower hours to our budget and to our schedule. But obviously, we have to have someone there to help each voter if they need it, to assist that voter, and to be able to check them in and work through that process. That is man hours outside of my office, in the lobby, as you all have seen. That is, I have to pull a person out there to manage that and to be able to check people into our system. So all of these things are required by law. For instance, obviously, you know, by history and criminal justice, the law tells you what's right and wrong. And election law, as you can see, it stipulates that I must have voters, voting available for eight hours for forty-five days mandated by law. The things that are, I guess, more specific to elections and that those requirements have to be met, otherwise we're not in compliance. And I think that's very important. We want to have transparent, legitimate, accurate elections, and I need people to be able to fulfill that role so we can get it done. I have to also answer for your requests. This is a federal election year. Those have just grown astronomically. So with all of those things, people think that, like, election day, everything is over with, you know? Do you work full-time? Do you just work one day a year? No. We are full-time, and there is always something going on if we are working. We're working towards the next election as well, trying to get things prepped and ready to go, so that I don't have to stuff ballots until late thirty at night, the night before the election, or the time that they're supposed to go out. We also accept ballots, this is something new in 2020, the post-election mail. We accept ballots that are postmarked on election day until three days after the election, and those also have to be processed through the machine. So election day is not the end of things, it's actually the beginning of things, so to speak. Our elections are not certified until seven to twenty-one days after the election, so there's constantly checks and balances going on to make sure all the paperwork is complete and our elections are accurate. So I guess the truth of the matter is that in order for us to continue to meet the mandates that are required by law, we do need more staffing in our office, and that is the basis for my request, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
What are the typical full-time hours that your current full-time employees work?
Eight-thirty to five, thirty-seven and a half hours per week.
Thirty-seven and a half?
Yes, sir.
And what about part-time?
Part-time, usually twenty-seven hours a week.
And is part-time considered somewhat seasonal, or does that go on continuously throughout the year?
Usually, one is continuously. We do have seasonal people that we pull in, for instance, like out in the lobby, if I have more of a crowd. Today, we've had a high number of voters, we've had over thirty today. So I need people out there, and they are just for during this forty-five day period to get us through the voting, and then I don't use them again until the next election. If, for instance, the one in January, we didn't even use anyone seasonally.
It was summarized in our background material that the cost to add to position is approximately forty-five thousand. Is that an increase over part-time, or is that an in totality?
That is an in totality, but it includes that part-time. What Mr. Wagner was talking about, the fifteen thousand would be the salary, the additional salary plus benefits.
Okay.
The person I'm planning to move into this position will actually save the county as far as eight thousand six hundred and seventy-eight dollars for insurance, because they will not require Henry County insurance.
So if they go full-time, they won't require the insurance?
So we have to offer them insurance. It's up to them to decide if they want it.
Okay.
But at this point, I do know that they're not going to need it.
Other questions?
Yeah, just getting all the, I guess, questions answered. You know, it says the fifteen thousand from March first to July first. What, I mean, how does it affect you if the board decides to say, we want to think about it, and it doesn't go, you know, if we vote to approve it, it wouldn't go into effect until July first? Is that a major impact, or is that something that would be sort of, you could get through from now to July, but you really want this position moving forward?
It's a major impact, and that's the reason for me being here today, because what has happened, we've had, obviously, a special election running, but because of all these mandates, it's required us to spend more hours. My part-time person, one of them, has used all of their hours, and I am... My part-time person, one of them, has used all of their hours, and I am out of hours for that person between now and May first. And I desperately need that person to make all of this happen and to get through this next election period. The county did offer me a temporary part-time person for position, and she is actually already working as a seasonal person, but we brought her in. She's graduating college in the spring and is looking for full-time employment, which we cannot offer in my office at that time.
Was that person offered because there was a?
Because of the crisis.
I guess there was a need, I'm not a need, but the county saw there was a need for you to have more folk in your office?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I went in with a crisis, so to speak.
So how much additional fundings will it cost for her to become from part-time to full-time? In other words, you're paying her so much, you say twenty-seven hours per, say, per week, that you're paying her?
Yes, sir.
And you're looking at thirty-six, thirty-seven hours for full-time?
I think the difference is the fifteen thousand, I think.
Is that the difference?
So the factor, you can't base budgeting and personnel matters on a person. You have to base it on a position. Because we have to fund a position because that part-time person could quit tomorrow, and then she would have authorization to fill it with someone who may take the health insurance. So we calculate the salary for an annual employee, add the cost of health insurance, retirement, sick, vacation, all those factors that go into it. So fifteen thousand dollars would be needed for the finish this year, if you chose to do it.
Right.
And it would cost an additional forty-five thousand dollars annually moving forward, and that's based on minimum wage salary.
Okay. Now, your part-time staff, where does the twenty-seven hours a week come from? Who puts the stipulation that that's all they can work?
County.
Yeah, so let me, I can address that as well. There's fellow law says if an employee averages more than twenty-nine hours per week over a fifty-two week period, you have to pay their health, offer them health insurance. That's a federal law related to the, I don't want to say Obamacare, well, what's the official name of that?
Affordable Health Care.
Affordable Care Act says if they work on average for the twenty-nine hours, we have to provide that health.
Okay. If, if by chance, the hours would be increased, part-time hours be increased, but the person would turn down the health benefits?
It would save the county money, but we can't operate on a one-if, because that person could quit the next day, and then they'd try to have a full-time position.
No, no, I'm trying to say if you didn't hire them full-time, you kept them part-time, but increased the hours and offered them insurance, but they didn't take insurance.
So that would be an initial eight thousand, six hundred, you quoted the number earlier, annually. But it gets into a real sticky situation when you're paying some almost full-time employees, because you think, pick one in the courthouse only working thirty-five hours a week. So we're getting real close to those individuals as well in Howard. And you're offering some employees full benefits with health insurance, retirement, sick, and vacation, but an employee who works thirty-two hours a week only gets health insurance and does not get sick and vacation and all these other things.
And this is not creating a new position, it's just taking a part-time, making it full-time? Okay.
All right, so let me ask you, we've got the forty-five thousand there, so actually that full-time position pays fifty-three thousand? Is that right, with benefits?
No, that's the total cost to the county to fund that position.
With benefits?
It'd be a minimum wage position, right? We discussed.
Okay.
I hope you don't feel like we're drilling. We're just trying to, this is something that we have to vet anytime we're adding positions.
It is a complex issue. We'd have hours of discussion trying to look at it.
Yes, sir.
And the problem that you run into also is that, and I'm not, I'll just come out and say it, the problem that you're running into is that, you know, every position in the county is crucial, and the service department, the sheriff's department, everybody needs employees. And if you open it up to a new employee at the registrar's office, then what's to say that the service department, the, I mean, the clerk's office, they won't come to you to ask for it, you know? So you gotta be, you gotta be careful that, number one, we can fund it, that we can pay for it. That's the biggest thing, is to figure out where the money's going to come from.
And I think, and I appreciate what you're saying, and I think we have to take each situation individually, because other folk may come asking for a position. But if we deem that it's not necessary, or there truly isn't funding, and I think, you know, we can all agree that funding is not an issue for us at this point in time. And thankful to those of you who all have been on the board and some of the policies that you put in place, funding won't be an issue, especially, you know, something of this nature, forty-five thousand dollars. So we've, you know, had those conversations before, but I do think, yes, we have to look at the precedents, the trends that were set. But, you know, as a father of three, I've got a daughter who's in college, and when she tell me she needs twelve hundred dollars to pay her rent for the month, I send it. If my fifteen-year-old come and ask me for twelve hundred dollars, no, you're not getting it. And we have to look at things that, you know, in that manner, that other folk may come and say, hey, if, you know, Ms. Dawn received it, we're going to go ask as well. But if you don't need it, and Ms. Dawn needed it, then it's okay if we tell other folk, no, or we can do this and not do that. So I think, you know, we can't make decisions based off of just the fact that if we give it to you, then we will have to give it to other folk, because that's not true. And then we also shouldn't punish somebody because other folk may come and ask. If it's needed, it's needed. I think, you know, that's what I would like to base it on. If it's a position that's needed, let's base it off of that, and we'll deal with other folk when they show up and, you know, what their needs are and what their requests are and the amount and, you know, what the county funds look like at that time.
Thank you for providing us a significant amount of background material, including some emails today with what other localities have as far as their staffing. With that, and you all have had an opportunity to listen, not only to the presentation, you've had background material, what action would the board like to take?
Let me ask another question. I know this year has been a special year because of the special election, and then also with the president's election coming up. Next year, do you see it being as hectic?
I do, and the reason why, as I've heard from both parties, not necessarily officially, but the talk is that it is cheaper on the party not to have a caucus or a convention, but to let the locality handle voting. And that that's the way things are going to go. We're looking at two to four elections per year, and with all of these increased mandates, and again, they had ten thousand mail ballots for November of 2020. I was not here. This is what I, the information I was given. So all of those have to be processed, and I understand what you're saying, but because this year has been a little more hectic, but I feel like sometimes we're just barely getting bothered by the skin of our teeth, and it's certainly stressful. I'm salary. I'm willing to work extra hours. That's not a problem. Some of my staff is not willing to work extra hours, even with overtime pay. And I'm not knocking them whatsoever because I have a phenomenal group, but if they choose that they don't want to stay late that day, then I can't force that issue. But the work's still got to be done. So that's kind of where I'm at. I would not be here if it were not crucial to getting the daily things that we have to get done in our office completed as well as successful elections.
And I know during the early voting season, you have some Saturdays. Do you have to have a full-time person there every Saturday, or could part-time folk come in without a full-time person being there?
They could if they have, number one, have access to the system, which my part-time people do, my temporary workers do not. And I'm usually there anyway because I feel like that's my responsibility, so.
Yes, sir. Hey? Any other questions, or is there a desire of the board as far as action to take today?
Mister Chairman, I, and Ms. Stoltz, I know both parties really, really well. And I know that when she requests this, she is sincere in the need that she has for her office. And I've talked to both parties, the party that wants, or not necessarily wants it, but needs to go in full-time, and I've talked to her also. I can see the need, need for that. I think our biggest thing here is the funding that's going to have to come in place to pay for that position. And it's going to be a permanent position from then on out. So as you said, Mr. Wagner, once you make a permanent position, if she quits tomorrow, then another person can come into her position and take it, and they can say, well, I want my insurance and stuff like that. I can see that happening also.
Yeah, and let me add, if you don't mind, I, we try to handle the day-to-day operations of the organization through shifting and authorizing overtime and part-time, and, you know, we're going to, with her office, to do this. And, but she's, you talked to her about the need for full-time, and it's not within my purview to authorize a full-time position. That's a public policy for you all, of course, it does create a new added cost to the county for, you know, as long as you authorize those full-time positions. So typically, we bring those full-time positions to you as part of the budget process. I'm not gonna, I can't do that on my own as the administrator, creating new full-time positions, and I relayed that to Ms. Stoltz Vaughn, and that's why she's here today asking you all for that.
And I guess, based off of what Mr. Bryan said, Mr. Wagner, do you see this having like a major impact on the finances of Henry County with this one position without considering anything else?
So I would like to say no, but I take every dollar in our budget seriously. I go through every line I am once a year during our budget process. So I bet every dollar, and this fifteen thousand dollars would be betted a different.
But would it have a major impact on the budget or the finances of Henry County as we currently stand?
I guess it's definition of major.
Meaning, would we be broke tomorrow? Or would it, or would it impact us in a manner that we wouldn't be able to operate fiscally and take care of all of the other responsibilities and obligations that we have financially?
It would not. At some point in the future, it may require us to cut out the services to continue to fund it.
I mean, I'll make a motion that, you know, we authorize a new full-time position for the registrar's office and approve, appropriate fifteen thousand dollars from the board's contingency for this purpose.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I think we thoroughly covered the background on this. All in favor? It is six zero, Jennifer. One other thing that, in regard to this subject while we're on it, I think not only full-time positions and the background material on this is, you all have stated that. But as a community, I hope that there are plans to further continue ask for volunteers that are polling places. I see a real gap forming there, and I, and I know that you've expressed that in the past to us, and I do appreciate that, and Electoral Board members. Whatever mechanism that needs to happen, and I, and I realize background training is required for those folks prior to that. Please bring it to our attention if there's ways that we can help publicly get the word out. And of course, websites get it out faster than most any other form of what we could do word of mouth, so to speak. But again, volunteers at the polling places are going to really, we've had folks that have done it for years that, and since the pandemic, they just don't volunteer like they used to, so. That takes us to informational items, and I'll begin by taking comments from the board, beginning with Dr. Kablo.
I'm not going to.
Mister Pruitt.
Nothing.
Mister Dillon.
Yeah, just a couple of things. One, you know, I was very impressed with the Blue Ridge Library and, you know, passing out the cups during Black History Month, and, you know, I hope one day we can just put all the history together, because I think as important as things like Black History Month, Hispanic Heritage Month, it's important. But we also live in a time where we know that that can also be divisive, and if we could just put it all together, and it's not us, but, you know, just as a country, and not separate, you know, folk by gender and race and all that stuff. But I do commend them for that. And also just want to say that, you know, being a supervisor is difficult. We have to make some very difficult decisions, and, you know, I think even tonight, you know, we made a difficult decision. And just, you know, keeping the facts out in front of us and, but we also hire folk, and some folk are elected. And I know that, you know, Dale and his team, you know, we get to hear from those individuals, and just continuing to, you know, build the trust in them, because I think that's part of what we do and what, you know, Dale and his team do is making sure we get the best folk in positions. And when folk come to us and they're asking for things, we can't always approve it, but we do look for ways and opportunities to help them to get what they need, to be able to best do their job. Because the better they do their job, the easier it is for us to do our job. And so I want to commend those folk, but also just, you know, kind of wanted to mention, you know, that and how sometimes it is difficult, but we do have to sometimes put trust that those individuals are coming to us. Because it is a true need, and it is something that they have vetted, they have thought through, they've looked within their ranks to see what adjustments, what shifts they could make to make it work for them. And once they realize that, you know, the resources they have isn't sufficient, they then come to us asking for the support and the help. And I think it just makes us a better county, and, you know, it's good, and I appreciate, you know, Ms. Stoltz coming to us because it allows us to also have to work together and communicate and, you know, debate and discuss and, you know, come to a conclusion. So just want to kind of mention those things.
Thank you. Miss Bitter?
The only thing I have, and I feel like Dale probably will mention at the Chamber of Commerce, their business trade show is coming up next week.
Mister Bryan?
I sure do. Matter of fact, this is probably going to be addressed to Surf Davis. I had opportunity to get a phone call yesterday from a lady that was expressing her concern about Clearview Drive and the trash that was along Clearview Drive and Arden Road. So I called and talked to Alan Root, which is in charge of the review, and he said that he understands that, that he has Clearview Drive and Arden Road on his agenda. But he can't get the inmates to do it. He said the inmates are use other things than cleaning up the highways now. He said before, the city would provide the inmates, of course, we had to pay for the services through that, and they was on a schedule, and they maintain that schedule quite decent. But now the roads in the county are becoming atrocious. You just have to drive down and look at them. It's not only just Clearview Drive, but it's multiple, multiple roads to the county. And one of the problems with Clearview Drive is, is that it's a frequent travel road to the city dump or to the dump site in the, in the county. And the trash trucks, even though they're covered, trash still comes out of those trucks onto the road, and then it ends up on the side of the road, and that's where it stays until the county or someone comes by and picks it up. So my question is, number one, is whenever we built that new jail, I was understanding, this is prior to you now, Surf Davis, through our prior surf, that our inmates of the surf department would be the ones that would come out and take over what the city was doing, and that we wouldn't have anything to worry about as far as the trash and stuff along the highways. I want to find out why we're not getting the highways cleaned up.
I believe you said Mr. Root mentioned they weren't cleaning it up for him. Is that what you said?
No, he said when he goes down sometime, they're not there. They're not ready, they don't, they're not, the detail's not there, they're not going out to work, or whatever.
So I assure you, we have inmate crews out picking up trash somewhere on the highways here in Henry County nearly every single day. They just done Bigsboro Community. I think Mr. Root wanted a crew assigned specifically to him, and we just don't have the resources for that. We manage our trash pickup, and we receive complaints from board members like yourselves and all citizens in our community. We immediately assign those problem areas out to our trash crews, and they're out nearly every day picking up trash, so. every day picking up trash, so. Also, my needs to call and report to us where the trash is, and we're glad to get on it. And if Cobbler has complaints, we took care of her right away.
Okay, so.
I'm not sure whether the breakdown of communication.
Well, maybe it's because the city had a routine schedule of where they went to. You know, they didn't have to be called, they went to all these places in the county, and now, from what I'm understanding you saying, is if we have a problem, we need to call you and have it taken care of.
But not only do we assign these inmate work groups to pick up trash alongside the roads, we've also assigned to go out and clean up the entrance signs to the county, local rescue squads, fire departments, anyone else who asks for assistance. So, that's why we don't have a routine schedule.
Well, yeah.
We're maximizing the workforce we get out of.
And I do understand that, I do understand that, but the fact is, because you allocated your inmates to all these other duties, the trash pickup on the highways are starting to be neglected. Now, you know, as a supervisor, you know, even though I live in the county, I don't travel all my district every day to see the roads and stuff like that, and not everybody calls you every day to tell you that the trash is picked, needs to be picked up on the highways until it gets, like Clearview Drive is, is atrocious, you know? As I said, the city would come and pick it up about every month or so, every three weeks. Every month, Clearview Drive was clean. Same thing with Stoltz Road, Stoltz Road's the same way, you know, it's the same thing there. So, are you telling me that, and the other supervisors, if we see a road that we need to get done, and we call it, and he puts it on the, his agenda to do it?
You send me an email, I'll take care of it personally.
Okay.
Yes.
And so, with that being said, the way we do business in county is quite different than the city. We have 364 square miles of roads to cover versus a small 11, so it's not practical for us to put our rural community on a schedule like the city had. It's just not going to work that way.
Sheriff Davis, let me ask a question following up on what he said. In the past, we would contact Mike Amos, and then when Mr. Root took over, I've been contacting him. Is that still the protocol that we need to do, and then he in turn would talk to you, or is there someone that we would talk to at the sheriff's department?
I ask if the board has an issue with trash, please send me the email directly.
To you?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I mean, I don't mind doing that. I mean, I think your job position is not, and the refuse position, you know, and I'd hate to have to go to you for just trash problems, but I understand what you're saying.
In addition, I'll get you some additional contacts direct to the Adult Detention Center who oversees the trash pickup program, as well as Deputy Robinson who oversees, and Lieutenant Keller, the local code enforcement for grass and trash issues.
Okay. And like I said, you know, I'm sure there was a communicating gap in there. I'm not trying to point no fingers at nobody, I'm just trying to understand why the highway's not being cleaned up.
I assure you, they are every day.
Okay. Well, I mean, I realize that, I realize that, but I'm just saying, in my district, they're not every day, because it's been that way for about a month and a half.
Well, again, we've got 364 square miles we cannot pick up on our schedule like the city, it's just not practical for us.
Oh, all right, good. Now, let's change to quick subject. You know, I told you that Piedmont Trust, the trash are coming out of the back of the trucks from Piedmont. Is it possible that the county could go to them and ask them to make sure that they cover those trucks good enough where they want to come out, or maybe even try to get them to do a trash pickup on?
We could certainly go to them and tell them it's a problem in the Clearview area that they need to do a better job of, number one, keeping their trucks covered, number two, picking up the debris that may exit their vehicles.
Yeah.
You know, it's up to them to do it on a voluntary basis.
Right.
In order to charge them, we'd have to catch them.
Understand, 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 okay.
Other items, Mr. Bryan?
That's it, thanks, sir.
Thank you, Sheriff. I don't have anything, Mr. Bryan.
I'll send you an email with a few reminders I have, that's all. I'll send you an email with some reminders I have about meetings at the Chamber of Commerce.
Okay, all right. With that, I will accept a motion to go into closed meeting if someone will cite the items as allowed by the Freedom of Information Act and Code of Virginia.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we go into closed meeting under 2.23711A1 for discussion of appointees to the Industrial Development Authority and the Planning Commission, 2.23711A7 for discussion of pending legal matters, 2.23711A3 for discussion of the acquisition disposal of real estate, and 2.23711A5 for discussion of as-yet unannounced industries.
Second.
We have a motion, second. All in favor? It is six-zero, Jennifer. See you all upstairs in five minutes. Amount of closed meeting on a motion by Ms. Buchanan, a second by Mr. Pruitt.
For members of the best of your knowledge on the Public Fitness Matters law for exempting from open meeting requirements for the Code of Virginia Section 2.2-3711 were heard discussed or considered in closed meeting. How do you vote, Mr. Adams?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bryan?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Buchanan?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes, sir.
Dr. Cobbler?
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Pruitt?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Pruitt, I believe that you have a motion for the board's consideration in regard to a public hearing.
Yes, sir. I move the Board of Supervisors to advertise a public hearing to consider a solar facility siting agreement between Energix and Henry County for a solar facility off Joseph Martin Highway.
Second.
A motion, second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's six-zero. If you'll record that, Mr. Powell. At this time, we will stand in recess from our afternoon session, but we do have a meeting with the school board, so technically, our session is concluded, but actually somewhat continuing with the school board. I call the 6:00 PM session of the Henry County Board of Supervisors back order from our recess and our work session with the county school board this afternoon. I'd like to welcome all of our visitors. Remind you, if you'd like to address the board at any of our regular meetings and be placed specifically on an agenda, you'll need to sign up with a seven days in advance of any of our regular meetings to be put on the agenda. The county administrator is the contact person for the board. However, members of the public may address the board under the agenda item, matters presented by the public that we will take up tonight in Agenda Item Number 17. Again, welcome, everyone. Thank you for coming out and participating in your county government. Our first agenda item is general highway matters. We have Dave Kaiser from VDOT. Dave, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Last month, Lisa mentioned that there was a project that's funded with others for some changes to the signal that our store and the 220, they'll blow over the beat-up residency offices. The bids came in too high, so it will be re-advertised. So, we have scheduled the second-day six-year planned hearing for next month, I believe, and you all should have a draft plan. And so, just what we had approved by you all last year was some updated schedules with that, and we'll have the hearing for this year at the next month meeting.
And we have not sent you a report yet.
Oh, for it. That's all I have for you all tonight.
Does anyone have any questions or comments in regard to the VDOT activities while we have a representative here?
I'd just like to, I reached out to Lisa a couple of weeks ago about some issues in the Huntington Hills, and she was on it and fixed it and had it done in a day, so I appreciate that, and they are very happy down there now, so.
Anyone else? All right, thank you. Agenda Item Number 16, a public hearing for rezoning application, R-23-01, Christie L Harbor. We have with us our Director of Planning and Zoning, Mr. Lee Clark. Mr. Clark?
Okay, this property is located at 74 Seminole Drive. It's in Recreate District. Taxation number is 286312 and 312A. The applicant hears request for rezoning to approximately three acres from suburban residential district to neighborhood commercial district B2. The applicant wishes to move her existing business providing wellness-based spa services to this property. Following a public hearing, both the planning commission and staff recommended approval of this request.
I'll open the public hearing to take input on this rezoning application at 6:04 PM. Is there anyone desiring to comment on this rezoning application? Anyone? Seeing and hearing no indication as such, I will close the public hearing at 6:04 PM. And Dr. Cobbler, I believe this is in your district?
Mr. Adams, I make a motion to approve the rezoning application, R-24-01, for Christie L Harbor, as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's six-zero. Mr. Powell, if you will record that. That takes us to Agenda Item 17, matters presented by the public. Is there anyone wishing to address the board under matters presented by the public? I see one hand. If you'll make your way to the podium, and as you do so, I have a brief policy statement to read as you're making your way. This is a time for public comment. We welcome your participation in tonight's meeting. We're here to listen to you. If you care to address the board and desire, come to the podium, state your name, your subject matter, and the district in which you live. By coming to the podium, you have agreed that you will exhibit respect for the board, the staff, and its members. You will receive the same consideration from the board. Please try to keep your presentation three to five minutes.
Thank you very much for giving me this time this afternoon. I'm Shelby Turner, I live in Recreate District. I want to talk to you about a constitutional amendment that was passed in 2019, namely Article 10, taxation and finance property exemption. I voted yes on it at the time because I thought it would benefit me as well as other senior spouses of these Vietnam veterans. But I went to the treasurer's office in Henry County, was told that was not valid because my husband passed away before he could ask for it. That was not my problem, not my fault, not his fault. It seems to me this is unfair. I'm still single, I have a premarried dude, I intend to do so. I still live in our own home at 162 Monmouth Street Drive. My husband was 100% service-connected Vietnam veteran. He was in the Agent Orange Foundation volumes in Vietnam, and that's what took his life. I'm asking for this amendment to be changed to include spouses of Vietnam veterans, even though they passed before they were, could ask to be included in it. We, the seniors, ladies and gentlemen of Henry County and with those, now deceased vets, all of us on fixed income, could use this help, but as it sits, it's dated January 1st, 2011, so we had to sign up for it. My husband passed November 28th, 2005. Been gone 18 years, and I could use the help. I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Is there anyone else wishing to address the board under matters presented by the public? Okay. Was there someone else? Okay, thank you. Prior to adjournment, Mr. Wagner, do you have any other communication items that you'd want to share, since we kind of had to cut our afternoon session a little brief?
Yeah, just a reminder and to get on your calendar, Volunteer Fire and Rescue Appreciation Day is scheduled for Friday evening, June 14th, at Jack Dalton Park. This is slightly different than what we've done in the past, it's been out on Saturday mornings, but we're going to try Friday evening at Jack Dalton Park. Get that on your calendar.
At what time?
6:00 PM, start time. And a reminder, the Martinville Henry County Chamber of Commerce Business Trade Show is next Tuesday, March 5th, and then Wednesday, March 6th, and I have placed tickets to that event at each of your stations. And the county will have a booth, as we've had in the past, and this year, we're using our booth to focus on our recreational activities in a community, but more from a business and business standpoint, where we're looking for sponsorships at Smith River Sports Complex and other tournaments and things like that, to offset some of the cost of operating parks and rent programs.
Okay.
That's all, thank you.
Mr. Powell, do you have anything for us? Mr. Martin? Board members, do you have anything? I have one thing. What kind of timeline are we on about moving the infrastructure from the previous jail to getting all of that? Do we have a deadline on that that is approaching, or is it still ongoing?
So, I'll let Mr. Powell answer that question.
Okay.
We're working on it.
I knew he was, he had to have something tonight.
Yes, sir. Yes, we are continuing to work on eventually the demolition of the old Henry County Jail. Currently where we're at, we are about to put out a bid for that demolition project. We're waiting for one final testing of some material inside the building that will help us determine where we can potentially haul the debris from the building to. So, once we get those results back next week, we'll be putting that up for bid, so our hope is to include that demolition in next year's budget.
Electrical, communication, any of that, is all of that?
It's all been taken care of.
Already taken care of?
It's not done. The electrical.
Oh, no, the generator, right. Yeah, we're still on the list of moving the generator.
What kind of timeline?
We're waiting on, all the contractors have already started. If you look behind the building here, there's a hole in the ground, and they're waiting on equipment to be delivered so they can finish that project up, but they hope to have it done by the end of this budget year, by the end of June.
Okay, all right, thank you. Anyone have anything else? If not, I will accept a motion for adjournment. Have a motion, second. All in favor? It's six-zero. Mr. Powell, if you will record that. Everyone have a good evening.